Please call the roll.
Kus.
Here.
Harris. Carlson. Olson.
Here.
Seibertson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brings us down to communications. We have a draft agreement between the city of Ketchikan and Gateway Borough on emergency management services that's laid on the table. Electric division bucket truck item. Dick, is this from you on the fireworks?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we could add it to the consent agenda. Last year we provided 3,000, I think, for the fireworks. I just wonder if we can throw that on consent to donate another 3,000 to the... Is it Lions Club on... I'm Dick.
Yes.
I haven't heard anything about fireworks.
No, it's right here.
Oh, okay.
Lay on table.
Okay.
Oh, that.
Same request as last year, 3,000 for the Lions Club for 4th of July fireworks. Does anybody have a problem adding that to the consent agenda?
No.
Steven Dunn will add it. And that brings us down to persons to be heard. Donna Luther. Come on down.
Good evening. I don't know if you can hear me.
We hear you.
First of all, as Ketchikan Char is co-sponsor of the fireworks, I'd like to let you know that we have a check for $5,000 for you on our desk. Okay, we've been down this road before. I'm here to talk about the smoking issue. I won't debate the obvious. It's not healthy. It's not good for you. Everyone knows that. But I will insist that the freedom of choice is very important. And since you, the council, last visited, the idea to implement a smoking ban in 2004, I was wondering if you were aware that since that time, 15 additional eating and/or drinking places have gone smoke-free. So, that would make a total of 31 hospitality businesses that are currently smoke-free by their own choice, leaving approximately 12 smoking hospitality businesses in our community, all of which you must be 21 years old to enter. So I would think by then you could make a choice to be around smoke or not. Make your own decisions. So, on to say, I can't remember the last time I went into a bank or a grocery store or a healthcare facility or the library or the movie theater and anyone was smoking there. But I do know that in my lifetime, you used to be able to do that all the time. Everywhere you went, there was an ashtray, you could smoke, it didn't matter. One by one, for some reason, I don't know why, but these businesses made a decision and they exercised their freedom of choice and they no longer allowed smoking in their businesses. The smokers of the community complied. There was no ordinance, no petitions for or against, no public protest to the businesses when they exercised their freedom of choice and became smoke-free. So smokers and nonsmokers alike have the right to choose which business they will or will not patronize on their freedom... on their own freedom of choice as well. I believe that as long as the businesses are in compliance with state and federal law, each business owner should then retain the freedom of choice with regards to policies carried out within and on that business premises. I think it's wrong for the council to make business decisions for businesses they don't own and are not viably invested in. Plain and simple. I would urge the council to not pursue a smoking ban at this time or any other. Instead, vote in favor of freedom of choice and table this issue indefinitely. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Steven.
Hello, everyone. I just want to... I'm Steven Cantor. I'm one of the co-owners of the 49er Bar and Liquor Store. I'm also the current Char president for the Ketchikan District. And I also sit on the State Board for Alaska Char. And I want to echo some of Donna's points and just drive home the fact that as a business owner and as a member of our trade association, we like to look out for the best interests of all of our members. And the easiest way we do that is not to say that we're for or against smoking or we're for or against this or for or against something arbitrary like trans fats or big gulps or too much caffeine in our coffee. That's not the way we look at protecting our industry. The way we look at protecting our industry is standing up against things just like this. It's a perfect example of a free market regulating itself, okay? Those establishments that want to go smoke-free are going to go smoke-free on their own. They're going to do it out of their own choice, for their own business reasons, and it's working. That free... it's a perfect example of a free market that's exactly working. If they want it, their customers choose to patronize those locations that are nonsmoking, that's what's going to happen. And if I take a look at the last 10 years at some of the restaurants that have gone nonsmoking, some of the clubs that have gone nonsmoking, some of the full taverns that have gone nonsmoking, they didn't need anyone's help to get there. There's plenty of statistics out there that show that each month, there are fewer smokers than the month before. Every time big tobacco gets sued, part of what they pay for is more consumer awareness and education. It's... that's a fact. They pay more money in advertising to keep people from smoking than they do to keep people smoking. That's also a fact. So it's going to happen on its own. We don't really need the city council to step in and help that along and start dictating to... especially bars, from my point of view, because it is kind of one of the last places that is available for people to go and sit and talk about American Revolution and talk about this, that, and the other, which is part of the culture of the tavern lifestyle. So, to echo Donna's comments, I don't think it's a position the city council needs to take. I think it'll take care of itself on its own. And I would just look at you to look at it from a businessperson's point of view. If we had... and we already have a ton of regulations on our industry as it is, but if you looked at it as a position of just one more regulation thrown on us, you would see it kind of from our point of view. You kind of understand why we're so against it. We believe in the freedom of choice. We believe that people over 21 are smart enough to make their own decisions, smart enough to know where the clean air is and smart enough to know where it's not. And when I stopped and thought about this a lot today, I kind of thought, it's a little short-sighted, in my opinion, to have the city council telling people they know what's better for them than they do. All right? So let's boil it down to that issue. They know where there's nonsmoking, they know where there's not. You know, to say, "Well, we want to make everywhere nonsmoking because we know what's best for you", it's kind of anti-Alaska, it's kind of anti-freedom. So, you know, I thought a lot about it and I thought about a lot of what I wanted to say today to each one of the members, and I would just echo that. Our freedom of choice is very precious. We take it very seriously. So, I would urge the council also to table this indefinitely and think about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Steven. Mr. Duckworth.
Hi, I'm Jack Duckworth. I live at 3175 Jackson Heights, Ketchikan, Alaska. I disagree with a lot what's already been said. Is this working?
You betcha.
A bunch of things. We regulate a ton of things. In 1982, there were 26,000 deaths due to drinking and driving. We put laws on that. In 2011, that was cut to 9,900. We saved a ton of lives. We lose 49,000 Americans a year to secondhand smoke. And the problem with it is not like if I walk into a bar where there's smoke and I'm going to drop dead. I'm going to drop dead in 20 years. So when people are young, they don't see what's coming down the road. They go because their girlfriend goes, they go because they like to dance, and then they pay that price in the long run. You know, 49,000, that's more, that's 26,000 for drinking and driving and 49,000 for secondhand smoke? And how can we even say we have the right to do that when we're killing people? I know that fight, I got that diagnosis. I ended up with tonsil cancer. I had to fight for my life 10 years ago from secondhand smoke. So to act like it's a freebie, it's not. You know, the Supreme Court ruled that cities have the right to regulate smoking. Smoking is not a God-given right and that cities can regulate smoking and we need to look out for those people. There's employees that can't make money other places, so they work in those establishments. And it's coming, but it's 30, 40 years down the road. As a city council, we not only have the right, but the obligation to protect these members. You know, somebody 22 going out with their girlfriend and want to go gansin and smoke, they're now thinking about what's going to happen to me when I'm 50, but it comes. And Marty West, thank you for bringing this up a second time. It's coming, but it needs to be... we ought to stand up and we ought to do it. So, that's about what I have to say.
Thanks, Jack. Terrence.
Hi there, I'm Terrence Robbins, 3710 Hillside Road. I'd like to echo a lot of the things Jack was talking about. I've been working with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition on a task force that's trying to get a workplace smoking ban put in statewide. And they're doing it town by town if they have to. You know, probably next year, the legislature will actually take it to a vote. They had a bill, it just didn't get to the vote this year. It's going to happen. You guys can do it now. You don't have to wait, there's no, you know, and hope that the legislature, you know, gets off their stuff and does it. Some of the things that, you know, I'm hearing from the bar owners are, you know, it's a personal right. It's not the right of the college students who come back and every one of them goes out to the bars. Every one of you has daughters and grandkids and stuff that are going to be in these bars. And if they're in Washington, California, Oregon, Anchorage, Juneau, Fairbanks, they're not going to be exposed to smoke, but in Ketchikan they are. You know, why don't we care enough about them when all these other states do? There's only 88 million Americans that don't have a smoking... a workplace smoking ban protecting them, out of like 400 million or however many you have. You know, we're behind the times. It doesn't hurt you guys at all to do this. If you don't do it, there'll be an ordinance. The state of Alaska did a study in 2012 and 85% of Alaskans are for a total workplace smoking ban. 85%. And I don't think Ketchikan's that different than the rest of the state. 74% of smokers are in favor of a workplace ban. And one of the bar owners here, and I know he didn't have anything to do with it personally, sorry. My uncle died from being in his bar for 20 years smoking. It was his right to be in there. He chose to be in there. He chose to live above the 49er. And then he died. His heart gave out, you know? His... he lived a rough life, his choices. But there's no way he was going to quit, not going back down to the place where his friends were if they all smoked. He couldn't, there's no way. It takes 11 times on average to quit smoking. And if you have to go to work and you're smokers there, it's going to be tough. I chewed for 20 some years. Quitting chewing took me... I ate commitment lozenges for two years straight. That's how I quit. It was hard. And every time, to this day, you know, 10 years later, if I see someone take a chew, my mouth salivates, I want it, but I don't, you know? But it was hard. I mean, I tried many times. So, that's another reason. If you have these young parents who are smokers already, if they're working in an environment that allows smoking, they're going to have a tough time quitting. And their children are very likely to become smokers if their parents smoke. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Terrence. George.
George Tipton, 2311 Sixth Avenue. I'm in a unique position because I have multiple establishments on both sides of the coin. But that was my choice to have one one-way, one another. I don't disagree with some of the things that the last two speakers said, but it still boils down to choice. An employee of mine that works in one spot knows what type of establishment it is versus the other establishment. They make that conscious choice when they decide to work there. Some will say, "Well, there's a select clientele that will be available to do that." Well, I look at it, there's a select clientele that elect to do that because that's what they've chosen for their livelihood. I have employees that have been with me for a very, very long time in both atmospheres. You know, I've talked with them on this issue. It's a give and take depending on who you talk to. I don't bemoan anybody, you know, their reference form and how they look at it. But at the same time, it was my conscious choice when I built a new place to turn it to a nonsmoking establishment, along with my partners. Others, we've elected to keep it the other way. I don't know that there's a winning or losing argument, no matter which side of the coin or what you discuss or anything, but multiple communities in this state have voted against this exact same thing that their elected bodies. I could go through and cite it, I could cite stats that would offset what we just said. Depends on how the questions are asked, the percentage and perspective that it's looked at and from, because numbers can be misconstrued, as you all know, going through a budget process, right? I've been there, I understand that. But if you elect to look at something, you can also elect to look at exclusion for certain spots that have already made that choice to stay that way. You can do that. Other communities have done that. I think Sitka was a prime example of that. They excluded the bars and made the other public places nonsmoking. Or at least, they were talking about it. I don't know what the final outcome is. That's an option you can look at if that's the road you'd like to go down. I think Donna summed it up by showing what has happened over the last 10 years since this was last discussed and how many establishments moved in a certain direction by their own choice. And I think you'll continue to see evolution towards that endeavor as time moves along. As to what the state's going to do, you know, you can't ever say that with the legislature because that got hung up in committee. Obviously, there was a lot of push both ways on that particular bill, you know, just as there would in another legislative session. So, if anybody has any questions relative to it, I know you're just looking at input and I appreciate the taking the time. We do have one member here that I'll also represent, Lou, you don't have to call him to come up, but his message is simple. He'd like to smoke his own cigar in his own establishment as he has been for close to 50 years.
We will not ask Mr. Close to come up. Mike Abbott.
My name is Mike Abbott, 108 Bain Street. I'm the owner of Mike's Elbow Room. I'm here this evening just to say that I'm against a nonsmoking ordinance and like the rest of them, I'm going to make mine shorter though, that I do feel the freedom of choice to run our business as we see fit because we have enough regulations and stuff now. And you've heard enough from Donna and the rest of them to know I agree with them. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. I have nobody else on the list. Is anybody here that wants to speak to the council that did not sign up? See you none. We'll move on to the agenda. That brings us down to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consent?
Move to consent.
Moved in second. Madam Clerk, can you read the items? Oh, hold it, timeout. I was wondering if we could add items four and five, the two change orders, to the consent, if anybody has any problems with that. Okay? Okay? Madam Clerk, can you read the items?
Approval amendment to regular meaning of May 1st, 2014. Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Indian Community for the Indian Reservations Road Program. Assignment of Tideland's Lease Seaborne Marine Services to JLI LLC. Change order number one final to contract number 1329 Berths Two and Three Site Enhancements Pool Engineering Incorporated. Change order number one, contract number 1409 Roosevelt 4G LTE Antenna and Equipment Placement Hotwire Communications LLC. Change order number three to contract number 1308 Phase Three of the Berths One and Two Rehabilitation Project Orion Marine Contractors. Change order number one final to contract number 1334 Hopkins Alley Structural Repairs Three Dog Construction Incorporated.
Did you... Lou did it. Fireworks.
Oh, and, excuse me, I'm sorry. A $3,000 contribution for fireworks to the Lions Club.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions before we vote? See you none. Call the roll.
Harris.
Aye.
Zingy.
Aye.
Seibertson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kus.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That brings us down to unfinished business, which we have done. So brings us to new business, 781 Discussion of Smoke-Free Bar and Restaurants Councilmember West.
Thank you.
Go away, Marty.
I was approached by several people who asked me to bring this up for a discussion. And so that's what I'm... what I did. I'm not trying to impinge on people's freedoms or anything like that, but I have been... I have had a lot of people that have talked to me like parents and Jack have, that they would like to see something like this going to effect. Maybe we should have it on the ballot in October.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Your Honor, I, you know, as a teacher, these are all discussions that we have at school board meetings, they're discussions we have at staff meetings about how we're going to help our children make good, healthy choices. And I came in tonight thinking, you know, this is a freedom of choice issue, but the more I thought about it as I was walking over, I remembered our discussion about the 5 cent per cigarette tax. The cost of smoking to our society is more than just my choice. The health cost, the healthcare cost, the cost on infrastructure is phenomenal. And I think... I flipped a little on this and I support the smoking ban. I think about the workers in the bars, I think about just workers in general, I think about people who don't smoke that want to go out. I had some cousins come up here who lived in LA two years ago and we went out to show them Ketchikan life at night and they lasted 20 minutes because they could not handle the smoke in the bars. So, we have visitors who are coming here that can't go out and go into establishments because of what they've become used to down south. I think it's... I think it's time for the change in Ketchikan. I think it's something that a lot of communities are going to, a lot of states are going to, and it's time for us to make that change too.
Anybody else, Dick?
Yeah, I agree with the folks that say it's freedom of choice. It's a freedom of choice, not only in smoking. The next thing is, it'll be, you can't drink alcohol except at home simply because it's bad for your health. So, it becomes a me, what's next? My choice, I've got an apartment, I don't allow people to smoke in it. Mr. Tipton and some of these other folks that drive bars, they don't allow smoking. It's their choice and it's my choice to go in or go out. So, I'm anti-government getting into anything that they don't belong in and this is one of them we don't belong in. We will make our own choices to have it in our place and you'll make your choice for it to come to the place I've done good business. And you can see the trend. It's going to trend and that's fine. But it was... we remain freedom in this United States to do what we want to do to the bare minimum it is now because it's being taken away every day by idiots in DC. So, anyway.
Thanks for that political message, Dick. I agree. Judy.
I think it's a freedom of choice issue. I think as a business owner, they'll make that decision. And some businesses have already gone that way. And I think that, you know, we can choose to go there or not go there. I don't think we should... I don't think we have any business in it at all.
Anybody else? KJ.
Couple of things. Number one, tobacco is still illegal. Still legal is what I'm trying to say. If and when the feds decide to make tobacco illegal and make it, you know, give us all a year to quit, then by God, we'll quit. Or if I'll shoot you after a year, I don't know what you're dealing with. But one thing that I did learn, there's nine very important words that you all want to keep in mind and that's, "I'm from the government, I'm here to help you." Those are famous words. And I just have a real fear of not just the tobacco thing, but it's like the drinking the big giant, big gulps or whatever back in New... I think it was New York, they were going to try to cancel that. At some point, somebody's going to decide they don't want the color red worn in public. I mean, it's just, we're always trying to help people. I think it's a matter that they have to make their own choices. And I agree with those two kids over there. It's a matter of choice. I think we should...
Bob, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm not a smoker. I used to smoke at one time. And I think I go along the lines of it's a freedom of choice. It's encouraging to see that there's 15 additional establishments that have gone nonsmoking and leaving only 12 left in that industry that will make those decisions. And I think it's based on a matter of economy. People will either go there or they won't. And even if you stop the smoking in the establishments, they're going to be smoking outside of the door or down the street or wherever that may be. You're not going to stop them from smoking. My mother was a smoker all her life, started at the age of 13, and she never wished to stop. And if I wanted to go visit her, I'd visit her while she smoked. But, and later on in life, she decided that she would smoke outside of her own house. She wouldn't smoke in the house. And she did that, she didn't smoke when she went into establishments. So I, again, I think it's a freedom of choice and people are going to make the right choices.
Okay. Marty, do you want to add any last thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we have this on the ballot in October.
Second.
Moved in second. Everybody understand what she hopes to do is October ballot.
Freedom of choice.
Call the roll.
Sorry.
Take your time now.
Okay. West.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kus.
No.
Harris.
No.
Seibertson.
No.
Zingy.
No.
Okay, that passed... I mean, fails 4 to 2. So far, I think as we spoke here, it still doesn't have the support to move forward on anything on the smoking. But Marty, thanks for bringing it up again.
Oh, yeah, it was fun.
And that brings us down to new item two, ordinance 141756 Amendment to Ketchikan Municipal Code to Increase Rates and Fees for Use of Mortgage Facility, Harbor Facilities and Harbor Master Services. First reading, we have a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move that city council approve in first reading ordinance number 141756 Amendment to Ketchikan Municipal Code Sections 14.40.020, 14.40.040, and 14.40.050 to increase rates and fees for use of mortgage facilities, harbor facilities, and harbor master services in establishing effective date. Second.
Bob, do you want anything?
No.
This is... raises it 7% to cover the bonds for the floats one and nine. Call the roll.
Yeah, I might want to just remind everybody that we decided to do this in two phases and then this is the second part of the first phase of raising it. And it was recommended by the Harvard Advisory Board.
Thanks, Bob. Call the roll.
Seibertson.
Yes.
Kus.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Harris.
Aye.
Olson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
All right, that passes 6-0. That brings us down to item three, Budget Transfer Professional Service Agreement for Peace Health Ketchikan Medical Center Edition Biomass Facility Study NAC Architect. We have a motion.
I think there's an option, one and two.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorize the city manager in to a perpetual service agreement with neck architecture that costs not to exceed $21,490 to undertake feasibility studies and equipment... equipping the Peace Health Ketchikan Medical Center Edition with biomass fuel boiler systems as detailed in Dan Jardine's correspondence to May 2014 and approve a budget transfer of $21,490 from the appropriated reserves of the hospital sales tax fund to the Public Health Department of Ketchikan Medical Center Edition and alterations project based due capital account.
Second. Moved in second, Bob.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know that we need to go here at this particular point in time. I don't think under this phase, there's any plans to replace a fuel oil boiler or add additional heat. I think that'll come, if it does, in phase two. I think the only concerns we have is that we look at the option of at some point in future, when one of those boilers time out or we add something to look at, the use of biomass. I really don't know if we need to spend the $21,000 at this time for that type of study because by the time we get down the road to actually doing something, technology's going to change. And we're going to be looking at something probably a whole lot different, I don't know. So, I made the motion in regards... So, um, I made the motion, uh, in regards, I think that, um, Mr. Ray Felton does a fine job of building statistics in regards to heating value, the different fuel sources and stuff like that. But I don't think that's needed. I think we've already gone through that once when we did, uh, the library. We talked about electric versus biomass versus, you know, heating oils. And, and so I don't think we need that type of an operation. I just would like to make sure that we're looking ahead when we are in the construction of the hospital as to the potential, what we're looking at, and don't kinda hamstring ourselves so we can't do something.
Okay, so you're in support of the motion? Are this twenty-one thousand?
Well, I, I guess there may be a call for deferment until phase two because that's really when this stuff is all gonna take place and we probably don't need to have it at this particular time.
Anybody? Oh, Dick the man.
Yeah, I, uh, started this and got it on the agenda here. And my comments saying that they have provided space in that new design for new boilers because they know they're gonna be replacing that heating system. And the question was, will that space accommodate biomass? And biomass in my mind is not, it's a proven, it's a proven, uh, technology. Except for some people that don't understand it. And so the question, the only question was, is there space available? And, uh, I don't think we need to go through a big feasibility study of saying, is biomass feasible? It's clearly feasible. Just is, is the space there. I tend to lean toward Bob's idea, we don't need a feasibility study till the next phase when those boilers go bad. And it may even be that the biomass thing goes over where the boilers are that go bad. But we just need to keep in mind, this is, this is where we wanna head. And don't build something that precludes, and that's all I'm after. So I, whether we do this one now or defer it, I'm probably cool with either one of them.
Nat?
Yeah, I concur with the two previous statements. I have my comment up here that I have is, if this is a phase two project, why are we looking at it now? We need to make sure we can get phase one done before we start progressing to phase two. And I believe when we had, when Dick brought up the question, that we had assurances that, um, not only was there a boiler room, it was on the outside of the building. And it was, is that correct, Cliff? And that we most likely had the space for it, so.
Good evening. Cliff Allen, Public Works Director.
You're welcome.
Uh, yeah, I, I can't say that's an assurance. Um, there appears to be, but I won't lie to you. We haven't had anyone actually analyze what space is required. We don't, we don't, we have an analyst yet.
I mean, to me-
That's what this type of study would do. So I can't say that unequivocally. I don't know what the storage volume would be for the pellet hopper. Uh, you know, we'd like to think so, but I can't stand here and say I even know what the dimensions would be for any given, given facility.
All right, but do we have, the internal space right now would house the boilers most likely, correct?
Again, most likely. Uh, but I, you know, I can't give that, I can't answer that with any, any definitive circuit.
Okay, I just think we're jumping too far down the road at this point. Thank, no, the next question, actually, just out of curiosity, what's the expected lifespan for the current boilers?
Uh, they are old. I saw one preliminary report, uh, mentioning another twenty years on the oldest of the two. They've got a waste.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, um, we have the motion on the floor. Call, call the roll.
You wanna call the roll or do you wanna adjourn the motion?
I move to defer permanently.
We have a motion to defer per-
To defer or table permanently?
Okay, two.
Let's table it.
You wanna table it permanently?
Yeah, as long as we table it, it's tabled until somebody brings it up.
Okay. I move to table it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Who didn't second it? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. It's been tabled. Six to nothing. And that brings us down to item six, Expiration of Two Thousand Four General Obligation and KPU Revenue Bond Authorization. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council direct staff to work with bond counsel to prepare such resolutions, ordinances may be required to submit ballot proposition to the voters for the October seventh, two fourteen election to authorize to incur debt for such water and sewer infrastructure projects and in such accounts as determined appropriate by the city council.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Bob?
Yeah, I, I made the motion because we need to get this on the table and discussion a little bit. I think there is some, um, confusion exactly what's going on in the fact that we have some existing, um, bonds and, and then we're looking at some potential other bonds to pay it up. And of course, there's all the rate increases here that are, uh, you know, associated with doing a, uh, borrowing some money. Um, I, you know, I don't know where we are statewide with our rate structure right now, Bob. Are we probably in the middle on water and a little low on wastewater?
We have a better (inaudible).
And with that-
We can do that.
Yeah, because what it may tell us is that we may be overbonded. And if we continue to raise rates to try to meet those needs, I don't know what the answer is. I know that we have infrastructure issues. But if you could kinda explain the memo here a little bit, Bob, or, uh, in regards to the existing bonds and the fact that those are gonna expire and what that means?
Sure. Um, back in, it was October two thousand and four, the voters authorized a five point five million dollar bond for wastewater improvement and a fifty million dollar bond issue for KPU improvement. In October two thousand and five, they modified the KPU, um, bond authorization to, the late two projects that had to, and the two they added was the, um, hydromodernization project and the UV treatment plant project. Under the city charter, we have ten years to issue bonds that have been authorized by the voters. And in July and August of this year, a part of that authorization will, um, go away. And then August of next year, the, um, the bond authorization to the UV treatment plant and the hydromodernization plant will expire. Our charter allows it's only ten years to issue bonds that have been approved by the voters. And that's what that means.
Nat, give me that.
So that means that with the existing bonds that are out there, we have five million dollars that we could commit, no?
No, we actually have, um, we have one point eight million dollars left on the five point five million dollar bond issue that will expire. And that's in the second paragraph in the, uh, the cover memo. But then we have three point two million dollars of the fifteen million dollar KPU bond issue that will expire.
That's five million.
That's five million. So we have approximately five million dollars that, that we have already approved that we can, uh, dedicate to a project someplace if we so choose.
Right.
Now, if we dedicated those funds, does that still require a raise in rates?
Yeah, probably. The answer, yeah. But you, but we have to issue these bonds before the deadline. And the chances of being able to do that are very remote.
Even the three point two that's due next year? That's in the utility for some water work, maybe? That's two fifteen?
The, the three point two million that expires in August of two thousand and fourteen.
Is that, that was fifteen?
Well, if we're going to make improvement for the UV treatment plant and the hydromodernization project, we have until August seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. But if we're gonna do anything else, we have until August, two thousand and fourteen. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
It's a little confusing.
Yeah. It, it was a little confusing trying to work through that. And of course, there's some real large projects on here up to forty-five million dollars that's probably not a, an avenue that we're gonna take. And, but there was no definitive cost that I could see on, on individual projects, I think.
Well, some of the projects on that list were not authorized by the voters.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, showing bond was a project that was approved by the voters in two thousand and four, but the cabin, that was not approved by the voters. So you would still have to go to the voters to get approval for the cabin project.
So are you guys looking for approval of this tonight so you guys can come up with something and show the council and hopefully be able to take it to the ballot?
Right.
So you're asking us to give you the approval before you come up with the details?
Right. And if you give up the approval, it will happen. We'll put together a ballot process that will coordinate your consideration after thirteen minutes.
Where you have some details then?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we can make the decision if we wanna go forward.
Okay.
Okay. Cause yeah, we, we need to see details. Dick?
Right. This is two issues to me. One, you've got an old bond authorization to deal with. And then the motion talks about a total new bonding that we wanna get people to approve. And we can't, we can't even come close to affording those new bonding things now. We might be able to deal with the old bonding, which maybe raises the rate a percent or two. Because, and we can just go do that if we want to. Is that correct? The old bond's been authorized by the voters.
It, it has been, but, but I think, I think what Bob had said is that the bond has to be issued bef- before the, before the expiration date. And that's what's, that's what the difficult part is.
That's not what this says. This is saying we wanna go do a new bond to the voters.
We, we do wanna put a new bond before the voters because this one will expire without being fully, without being fully expended. So-
We have no intentions of, of using them as borrowing?
In, in July and August of this year, you're gonna lose the authority to issue more bonds going out into the future. If you wanna do any of the projects that are on the list and that forty million dollars total, you're gonna have to go to the voters for a new bond issue. And right now, we're proposing that we do some of those projects on the, on the list.
So what about, what are you gonna do with the bond, the bonding we could do under existing authority?
Maybe plan.
So we're just gonna let those go?
They'll go away. Whether, I mean, you've, you've only got two months to issue them, and there is not traffic for to do that. Both of the, um, the water and sewer improvement volumes that are issued to ADPC is a very complicated and a long process to get a loan agreement in place, uh, for ADPC loans.
Those are the seventy thirty loans, aren't they?
Yeah.
So they pay seventy, we pay thirty, and we utilize the proceeds of the bond to pay the thirty percent.
Right, yes.
And that's why we put that up, to try to get those through the state so we don't have to pay for the whole costs because they pay seventy percent. So I understand the process. I just need to see what, um, you guys are gonna come up with so we can look at what kind of, um, water or sewer rates we're going to have to deal with to increase or whatever. So as long as we have some details, I have no problem moving ahead with this, but we gotta see exactly what we're looking at and if we wanna go there. Nat?
Uh, Bob, when we get these, can we also, when you get your, um, repayments and possible, where is it, somewhere in here you have, how much, how much per million dollars it's going to cost? Can we also get how much it will cost to do each in terms of, you know, this project is gonna be this much in city money and this is how much our, you know, that cost will be per project instead of just per million?
We can do that, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Cause that, that would help me, so thank you.
Sure.
Bob?
Yeah, I would just, you know, and I don't know what all these projects are gonna look like going forward. But, um, I guess I would be looking at them in smaller increments rather than a big one.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, so if you, as much as you can break them down, more likely that we can at least get some of these things done. Just, you know, this is a thought.
Dick?
Yeah, and I'm going to assume that anything we propose, we're gonna come back and show us how much we're gonna have to raise the rates to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, right.
That's what we gotta see, of course.
Yeah, you bet.
And you do a rate study to state people?
All right. Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kuss?
No.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to one. Uh, brings us down to seven, Amendment and Limited Notice to Proceed, number two hundred, Contract thirteen thirty-eight, Preconstruction Services Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Late in Construction slash Dawson Joint Venture. Venture?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorize amendment and limit notice to proceed, number two, in the amount of six million, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars two, Contract number thirteen dash thirty-eight, Reconstruction Services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project between the City of Ketchikan, Late in Construction Company, Inc., Dawson Joint Venture. Increase the contract amount from one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, sixty dollars to seven million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars authorizing funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project Capital Account and direct the city manager to execute the contract amendment and limited notice to proceed on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Bob, do you wanna add anything?
Uh, it's just that this is a, a process where they've, um, started their procurement plans and they got the expend money to, to move forward on this and, and this, I think, standard procedure.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, that brings us down to KPU. No, no vouchers, no KPU. Manager's report. Bob, yeah, I mean, Dave, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add, your honor.
Um, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Lou, I got a question. It would be, uh, on, I think, page one ninety and it deals with the elevator at the hospital. And it's talking about an upgrade. Let's find it. Talks about prospective contractors in the bid date of June fourth. Okay, my question is, that's not part of the current hospital deal. This is part of something else, and how much does it cost?
It, oh, like Cliff talked to, it, it is separate from the, from the expansion project, correct?
Is there a price on it?
Cliff Allen again. Of course, there's a price. We were at one point looking at, uh, six hundred thousand for this. It's been on CIP, uh, list for the last couple of years and we just couldn't give it due to staffing issues. Our current estimate, I think, is down a little bit from that, Nat? How much?
Five.
Okay, we're down around five hundred thousand. That said, the bids aren't in yet. Uh, this one's been deferred two, if not three years running.
I've just, it surprised me that they're not ADA compliant. Maybe the rules change every year. It's going in both sides of those elevators. Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, Bob?
Uh, Dave, under, um, nine eight twelve, I noticed that the borough is looking for some additional information in regards to our solid waste area wide disposal fee.
Correct.
Uh, is that, um, just on a renewal basis?
For, for the, for the agreement?
Yeah.
Correct. It's, they're looking, looking, the, the, the solid waste agreement with, with the borough expired, I believe it was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And Carl and Dan had talked about it back and forth for a while at that point, and then it fell off of everybody's radar for a while. Um, so the, between them, they're, they're picking it up again. Um, the borough was asked for some information relative to collection disposal, where it's coming from, um, quantities and all of that for a period of time, so we're working to get that compiled. It's just not at the top of the priority list at the moment.
Your honor?
Yes.
Wasn't there a solid waste committee that reviewed that and put it together with the, I think John Conley, myself, and a few other people were on it? And that's how, through the discussion, they came up with a recommendation for fifteen dollars.
I think that, before my time, but I believe that's correct.
And I didn't know if we were gonna review those rates at any particular point prior to signing a new agreement. I don't know where we are. The, the intent was to use the fifteen dollars to cover our costs over a period of time so we didn't have to move rates up and down and, and a lot of different other things. And it was more than just, um, you know, the disposal of your household. There, we, we had an indiscriminate dumping issue at Ward Lake and End of the Road and other places. And the borough were, were in hopes that doing something like this, that you're already paying for- And the borough were, were in hopes that doing something like this, that you're already paying for, would alleviate that issue, and it did. It, it cleaned it up a lot, I mean, it cleaned it all up, but, uh, I think the community has learned and moved forward with the fact that this is a, a great service that we provide. Um, and it's a benefit to, to everybody. I think all the governments, the, the city, the, the borough and Saxon need to sign on to this and keep it going.
And, and like I said, I think realistically, I think the discussions started very shortly before Carl lectured this line of bills, so we're just not picking it back up, we're picking it back up.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to, city clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
The city attorney isn't here, future agenda items, anybody yet? Mayor and council comments, Dick?
Uh, only really wanted to follow up on the bonding thing we talked about. Could Bob make a summary of our total bonded indebtedness? And with some thought as to, is there recommended limitation on this city, this size with our revenue? Uh, are we, are we getting in over here? Anyway.
We'll be waiting for Bob's memo. Judy?
Well, I guess sort of along those lines, I'm wondering if there's, again, it's for Bob, a report that's generated that would show us where we are actual to our budget. I mean, as we're, you know, that budget time is creeping up on us and I kinda like to have an idea of where we're at and what that looks like, especially, you know, give me a, help me ask the questions I wanna ask.
Matt?
Um, I know we're just starting the hospital project, but I wouldn't mind seeing something about projected costs. Are we gonna spend all forty-three if we're looking at a possible overrun or are we looking at an, an under run?
We'd love it.
Sorry, that's fine.
Marty?
Oh, pass.
Bob?
Uh, yeah, I, I think what she's looking for is probably one of the detailed budget reports that we get. And if we can do that on a quarterly basis, the council helps us get us in line for, for where we're at, um, going forward. I found that report very, very good. Um, another thing is, I, I know that the borough at the airport have the RSPs in hand and they're trying to figure out a design, um, company to put in their biomass boilers over there and they're pretty, pretty positive that it's gonna be a, a model for a lot of people to look at. And I think that, uh, we're working in the right direction actually. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny?
Um, I just wanna take time to thank two people, one of them would be Katie, I mentioned you that last time we had a meeting. She has made my job so much easier on this city council because she explains stuff to me. And I just walk out of here and go, huh? And Katie goes, oh, this, oh, yeah, and she's always turned on my iPad for me because I just can't seem to work that out. And the other thing is, uh, last Wednesday, I went out to Whitman Lake to take a look at the project and all this kinda stuff because we're spending like twenty-seven million dollars out there and I wanted to see what it looked like. Well, because I'm a mountain climber and a, you know, real athletic kinda guy, I ended up falling down. Um, and I was kinda worried what I was gonna do. Well, Dave explained to me that I'm a city employee, so I went to call up the doctors. They got me in, took a look at me, and I don't know what the bill is. But I must say that, once I told them I was, I guess, covered under workman's comp, I got four follow-up phone, phone calls after the first doctor's appointment, letting me know I needed to go see a neuros- or knee, some kinda knee surgery guy. And it's the first time in like thirty years of going to Wilson Clinic I've ever had follow-up phone calls suggesting that I go other places. So I mean, it was really nice to have, know it was covered, even though I took my checkbook out there. I appreciate Dave letting me know. And I'm sorry about hurting myself, duh.
All right, um, oh my God, um, first of all, we're gonna have to spend more money, our reserves that's a thirteen point eight million between general hospital, public works, community, and.
We'll fix that.
Yeah, we gotta get to work the second half of the year. Um, second, while he could, he'd be calling me down there by his, um, loading zone saying that, um, his pe- um, people going in the loading zone there are getting tossed out by the port, um, security. Um, so I pass that on to Dave. Um, and it might be even tied to, I've talked to Mr. Flora and the cab guys were looking for space down there in that little section down there by port securities building. Um, they have, um, cab spots down on one end, down on the other. Um, they're looking at maybe putting, um, getting a cab spot down there, so I imagine that'll be coming up. Um, otherwise, it's been, um, pretty quiet, I'm trying to think if there's been anything else, um. I just like the good weather coming, um, this weekend, I, it's gonna be busy all over. I think every high school sport is in town here this weekend, so if we need to support the local, um, kids and everything, there's gonna be baseball in one field, softball on another, and I imagine, um, soccer somewhere else or something, so, um, there's gonna be plenty to do. Um, I have nothing else, uh, we have no executive session. Everybody really enjoyed this meeting because I hear the next one's gonna be a real fun one, so everything's gonna be piled up and on that one, so. We have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Or adjourn, thank you, everybody.